I may be a little late tomorrow.
I'm not that far away.
I may be a little late tomorrow.
Oh, okay. We'll be here.
Yeah, okay. I've got a patient.
I'm hoping to get outside too hot, but it might be. Oh, wow.
I'm ready to go with them?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start tonight with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks again for coming out tonight. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. I've got one removal, which is F two K, the old business water tower, the motion to cancel the sign. All right, B, I'm sorry, B. So remove B, keep A. And then there's an addition, A two G resolution reauthorizing membership in the four M fund. So that's on the consent agenda, and that's in the packet. That was in our packet that was uploaded. Those are the two items that I have. Anything else? Dan?
I'm rushing to go ahead.
Bonnie?
No?
Good, good. All right. Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
Second.
Thanks Bonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries unanimously. On to the consent agenda, number two.
The mister got fixed, so we're good there.
Yeah. Yeah, that was quite a jump, so.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda. I'll make the motion.
Stand, do you have a second? Say aye. Thanks Bonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries unanimously. No visitors tonight, no public forum from hearing. On to old business F one. Request of the last meeting for a list of some deficiencies, and that is in front of you on the table. I guess that's that. So I want to see if you have any questions on that. Contact fire chief directly.
Next, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I was hoping that someone would actually show up here and present it like I was asking. A lot of the stuff here, like mold issues, starting off with, they've got quite a list here, and they say they didn't have enough time to get it completed. If we have all these deficiencies in this building and inadequacies that we've been getting shots at in our correspondence, I think it's one of the biggest inadequacies that we're getting this now after I asked for it. A lot of this stuff should have been brought to light a long time ago. If we have a leaky building, mold, and doors that don't work, and I think it is, it's a mark against our chief for not taking care of this stuff beforehand. So I know it's a ploy to try to get a new fire hall, but the one that we have here is sized big enough from what they came from before, and I just want to make that statement here to make sure that going forward, that someone stays on this.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, it's with any maintenance thing, if you do a little every year, you can get caught, but here we are, just okay to budget, nothing's been said about any of it. I mean, the guy could have put something toward lighting or something this year, something that, you know, maintenance goes a long way a little bit every year.
Okay. Want to take it? Old business number two, water tower sign. So we do have in front of us, I understand there was a meeting last night, and that everybody, I do have a signed piece of paper that everybody that was there signed it, said they were good with a joint recommendation. So I'd like to thank everybody who got together and did that, and we should be good to go, correct?
There's one correction on what is in front of you. After stone mason Edward Wilson, there should be a from in our way.
Okay.
In the, in June of that year, the council should be lowercase, not that big a deal, but.
Okay.
And Linda mentioned she would like to have it broke up into three paragraphs, but the problem with doing that, we're eating up space. We've only got so much room for so many characters, and this is what was agreed on last night, so I think this is what we need to push forward. And I too would like to thank Dave, Linda, Don, Mel, Theresa for helping out with this. Y'all did a great job. It was awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks everybody.
What was that, Lisa?
Yep, thank you everybody for doing that. I really appreciate it, and we're going to end 2018 with the last discussion of the water tower sign ever. So I'll entertain a motion to accept what was presented to us with the changes that were made, but at the same time, we'll have to, the same motion will be to cancel the previous version and go with this version. So I'll make the motion. We cancel the previous version, we accept the version that's in front of us, and we move forward with that, so I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Thanks Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Number three on old business, after our last meeting, we had a revision to the budget where we cut full time to part time. That reduced the amount of the levy that we needed to ask for, so we're going to take that halftime that we took out, and let the taxpayers keep that. So the first one is a resolution approving the final 2018 tax levy collectible in 2019. I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Bonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Sorry, one second, I just closed my laptop. Go to the next page. So F four is then the revised budget. So the revised budget, we were at 6.97% for an increase last time, it's at 6.28 with that change. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget at the 6.28% increase over the previous year.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. And I just want to make sure that I messed something up?
No, no.
You had kind of approved it last time, but now that it's set numbers, if you've chosen not to, it'd be okay if you worked it, you're fine.
Okay, we're right, all right. All right, thank you. I just saw your kind of wrinkle here. I didn't know if I had a question.
It was about, but she was trying to single me, it was fine.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to G, new business number one, resolution of conveyance of tax forfeited property.
This is the property that's on the east side of the bridge on county thirty-four that kind of meets, it has a little bit of mass, it has Maston Creek. Actually, the property's on both sides of Maston Creek. The DNR has recommended that the city take that as park land, and it does fit into our, we have a trail right on the other side, so it does kind of fit in with our trail plan as well.
Okay. So this is land being forfeited to us?
Exactly.
Okay. Any questions for that? I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution.
Motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Resolution passes unanimously. Number two, the manpower increase, there was a letter from manpower, their annual increase going up 1.5% for 2019. That's just the normal cost of doing business and increase, so. Any questions on that for Theresa? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Same, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Motion carries. Number three, dog kennel pickup. I met with the police chief when we did some personnel things and personnel interviews, and he kind of brought me up to speed on this. So you have the letter in your packet, basically KM Regional has let us know, the Regional Vet has let us know, they no longer want to be the place that we take our impounded dogs and the police pick them up, and then they wait there for the owner to pick them up, and then they go into the human site if they don't get picked up. And the other vet clinic in town does not want to do it either. Byron is in the same situation. So that's the gist of the letter. Chief role is that we don't have anywhere for the police department to take the dogs when they get them.
So Mel, attorney last week did update me that Dodge Thunder is in the same boat because Terry's, that Kerry's house is no longer going to take their impounds either. So I asked her to just let us know if they have discussions about contracting, about independent kennel or something, so. Both days, I'll stay in touch with the administrators, and if something comes to light, I'll let you know.
I didn't have a chance to touch with anyone, but I thought people that are in grooming businesses, there's a few of them in one outside of Vanderbilt, one south of town here, maybe they'd be interested, you know, they have people around during the day, maybe they, they must have a way to contain some animals, you know, and maybe talk to them individually and see if they'd be interested in something like that.
I know the police chief was going to reach out to some people in town he knows that have a dog kennel or something like that, just to say, hey, you could be the place, because we pay the vet clinic to keep them, you know, and we pay them to do the same thing, but they'd have to be willing to do it and able to do it, and if we even had a network of two, three people you could call and say, hey, we have a dog, can you take it? You know, so he's going to look out for.
I just thought the people that groom me, they probably have cages already or something and have people around it. That's all I thought of.
So you just want to let us know that, and if you have any ideas or thoughts, Sheriff. And like you said in the letter, they had ten impounds this past year, so it's not like they have a dog every day, but when you have one, you have to have a place to take it. Okay. Mayor's report, I just wanted to kind of go through, you know, since the last meeting of the year. First, I just wanted to make sure that we thank all the volunteers that work for the city or volunteer their time, all the people on boards and commissions, and other volunteer opportunities that people have with the city, just to recognize them and thank everybody for doing that, and all of our city employees for another good year of the city of Cassin, all our first responders, parks, streets, sewer, water, all the people out there working when it's cold, so appreciate that. And then to recognize two outgoing council members. Do you guys want these out of the box?
No.
Okay. Go ahead. Thanks for your service for the last four years. Appreciate it. Doug? Same thing? You get one out of the box, you get a box. I don't know what's in it, but it's a box.
That's awkward.
Thanks guys. You both put in four years. I know just the two years that I've served with you, we don't always, you know, agree, Doug and I talked to you then, we don't agree on everything always, and we can agree and still walk down the street and.
When you come up with the best solution, I.
But I appreciate that, it's not always good when it's always in agreement either, so. I do appreciate that, thanks for your time, because four years of public service, I'm sure you've had a few butt chewings along the way, and some good positive feedback also, so. Good luck. Thanks guys, appreciate it. Thanks. Administrator's report.
So I also provided a few wrap-up comments in my summary. I did have one thing to add to it. We're still working with Enterprise to update our current vehicle information, so it will be after the first of the year when we come back to you with the potential dismal vehicles for a little thing. We just haven't wrapped up with them yet at this point.
Okay, any other questions for the administrator on that wrap-up she provided in the packet? There's seventy-nine things there.
You skipped them.
What did I skip?
Joint request for XL.
Yep, we sure did. So MPUC did approve the resolution between XL Energy and the City of Cassin for the service by exception customers under, I think, a 2013 agreement, and also the city purchased some additional territory that includes some sports fields near the high school that were served through the same transformer that served in the high school. So that's been approved by MPUC, and then because that got approved in the winter, it'll actually be spring before we change over to their service, but it has been approved.
So it does include the whole entire high school property now, with just athletic fields included in that?
Yes.
Because before it was kind of.
Kind of, right. It was like, we had, right, we had some territory in the front, and they had some athletic fields in the back, and we purchased, right, to serve the athletic fields.
HKGI revised schedule.
So, yeah, planning commission is working on the zoning ordinance update, and the planning commission is aware that we have a revised schedule, so we'll, Laura will be back to their January meeting.
Okay. So is that it on, was it over then? We go on to the engineer's report.
No.
Okay. Brandon?
All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Two things tonight, the first one being Highway fifty-seven improvement project. This shouldn't be anything due to the council generally. We are planning construction in year 2021. We are in agreement with MINDOT to have some MINDOT funds coming into town to help us pay for that roadway. So the first thing in the council packet, again, something you should have seen before, is a presentation that Theresa and I gave to MINDOT to secure the funds. I've added that in your council packet, just more of an overview of what we're doing. It is a full reconstruction of Highway fifty-seven, including our city utilities from county thirty-four in the south end to the north end of the fairgrounds. The second item in there is the cost opinion that we put together in the letter of attempt, that is the agreement we have with MINDOT outlining some of the costs. Ultimately, there's $3.2 million from MINDOT, and about $2.6 million from the city cost there for a total project of $5.8 million. And again, that's what we've laid out in the agreement that we've had to this point with MINDOT. So there's the quick backgrounds on what we're doing here for a project, and what we'd be for you tonight, looking for a motion in consideration as a professional service agreement for engineering services to start designing this project. This is going to be a two-year design project, we had a lot of work to get this level of a project kind of pulled off and ultimately approved through MINDOT processes and get a contractor on board. So with that said, part of the agreement in the letter of attempt here with MINDOT is the city is going to be designing, we're going to be leading this project, ultimately call it the plans and specifications, and then we're going to hand those plans over to MINDOT, and MINDOT's going to take over the construction side of the project and incur the cost of the construction side of things, and they're going to administer the contract. So with that said, the agreement in there kind of lays out the scope of the work through the exhibit number eight. It's a very detailed exhibit of work there, that's our engineering work, there's twelve pages in there, I've worked that through with MINDOT. They've reviewed that, they've approved this exhibit of work, because ultimately this same exhibit of work is going to come to the city through a secondary agreement to basically outline the design process that the city is going to agree to complete as us as the consultant. So with that said, that is what we're looking for a motion on, and then the last item tonight is looking at establishing a technical advisor committee. One of the big things we need to get going here on this project is, what is the scope of the project, what level of beautification we want in the project, what lane configuration do we want through this project, what avenues do we have to provide some additional benefit to citizens? Do we have parking, do we have a centered turn lane, do we have stamped colored concrete, do we do plain concrete, what do we do for trees, streetlights, et cetera? All those design items that we need to work through. What we're asking tonight is if the council wants to have a technical advisor committee to help steer staff and MINDOT through those design processes, and ultimately steer them through the design process and then bring them to the public to help solicit that public comment, so we're kind of not going to the public with these design considerations kind of blind. So that's something to consider, we necessarily need an answer or a committee, sometimes it's assigned by the mayor and the council, and if we want to poll citizens, or if we have citizens, we want staff to approach, happy to tackle that any way, any way you direct staff to develop that, but that's kind of my recommendation to give us some feedback, very similar to the comp planning process, where we had a group that got together, reviewed some of the documents, and then brought that forward to the public for ultimately public comment, to help steer kind of the project a little bit. So with that said, that's what we have tonight for fifty-seven. With that said, I'll maybe drop back to the PSA and ask if any questions on that.
So we need a motion on the service agreement. When do we pay this? Because this isn't a line item budget in our budget right now.
Although we weren't DMF, I forget what was in our original plans, but there may be some.
Yeah, I did jot down a note, I think from something Brandon sent me, that the engineering is paid thirty percent in 2019.
Correct, yep.
Sixty percent in 2020, and ten percent in 2021.
Right, is that going to come out of the enterprise funds?
Some of it will.
Since that's where most of our cost.
We were talking earlier about operating, make sure we got the project broken out between street, storm, water, and sewer.
Okay, we've got the budget to build with the enterprise funds and the rest of the budget.
And that's why I don't remember is how much might be, we might need to debt, we might not. Just.
Okay. Any questions for Brandon on that?
What do you, I just am kind of befuddled at $610,000 on a $500,000 project.
Five forty, yeah.
I mean, I'm trying to read down to the scope of it here, and MINDOT's going to take over running the project once it kicks off then?
Correct, yep.
Having all the monies and.
Hand, we.
Are they taking care of payments and all that stuff too, and?
Correct, so all this project will be administered, again, the city will develop plans and specifications due to the design process, and I can go through the twelve pages of scope of work, but just generally, we'll develop the project, we'll define and propose the MINDOT, what we want for street section, signal replacement, sidewalks, any beautification elements that we want to add into the project, et cetera, and ultimately hand those plans over to MINDOT. MINDOT takes those plans, they let the project bid the project, and they're going to do the construction administration for the project, and then send the city basically an invoice for reimbursement for the construction cost.
They're just having a tough time following, I don't see a breakdown of how many hours here and there, they just get a lump sum, figure of $610,000, and it's a good percentage of that, you know, it's part of the project, so.
Yeah, it ends up being about twelve percent of the project cost.
That's probably what I'm thinking. Well, yeah, probably, but I mean, it's just, it's hard for me to look at this right here without a breakdown of, you know, some hours of here and hours of there, I mean, if you come up with a not to exceed $610,000 type project, where we're building an hourly rate or something, I can see that in $610,000, with a lump chunk of $610,000, that's, can sell a pretty good song and dance for $610,000 off breaking the note, lying out of like, the ones that we actually pay for when the projects are being done.
Isn't this a similar arrangement? Am I?
Well, they're getting bigger.
With the third, fourth, and fifth project, like sixteen or seventeen percent?
Right around there. Yeah, it was probably more a percentage, again, but we have the construction admin side of things that we handle. That project, I think, was a $990,000, $990,000 contract we did lump sum. The other discussion, you know, we can go either way on it, the past practice of the council's been lump sum, that's why I proposed it as lump sum, I'm happy to go back and relook at things, but sometimes a lump sum, as I can hold our staff to the fire too, and the city can budget and say this is what it is, and.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you can throw it in as a not to exceed, not to exceed $610,000. I mean, that's where at least I, I think a lot of those, you do your due diligence, and we know that it's going to take this much, roughly a hundred hours to do this part of the project, or fifty hours we have spent on this part of the project.
The only, the only problem I see with that, holding them to a budget if they add beautification, or if they add certain things, it's going to increase the engineer's cost.
Correct.
There is some scope of work that we're doing on third, fourth, and fifth that we weren't necessarily planning on, so it gets down to the hourly not to exceed that we weren't planning on ultimately doing, that we're just doing as part of the project. So that's where.
If it's outside the scope of what you put in there, you get, there's a, you come back to the table and negotiate and get paid for it. I'm just saying, I'm assuming that this lump of sum fee is not to exceed, you're doing all this work, you're doing a complete project, as it stated, not to exceed your lump chunk right now, right?
Correct, and that's what we're doing on third, fourth, and fifth, we're doing additional work.
So what you just said meant absolutely nothing for what that.
No, no, what I was, but this doesn't include some of the extras that could come up, and like, you're right.
I'm not asking that at all, I'm just saying, it just, there's no real breakdown on it when you look at it as a contracting point. So just bringing it up, my thoughts.
And to that point, one of me, I'll clarify a little bit on what's not included in here. One is the electoral design, which is going to be a very small amount of money in the grand scheme of what we have here. I'm talking over Todd, we're planning on using the city's existing electoral consult to help with some of the street lighting things, because the street lights aren't currently maintained by the city in the electoral department. That is probably going to be pretty minor in the grand scheme of what the engineering fees are. And then second, secondly, we talked about beautification, since we haven't developed that scope of the project yet, so the things that Theresa and I have been discussing is, how do we figure out what scope of what we want to do? Obviously, if you want more, it costs more, and there's a small amount, I think it's $110,000 in here budgeted, and a fifty-fifty cost share between MINDOT and the city, allocated to what is called aesthetics in the budget estimate. Of course, more than that, then that's a discussion that the city's going to have to work through, and we don't necessarily have a lot of that beyond that number within this, so if we want to add some sort of beautification, it's going to cost more, it's going to be something that's going to be, you know, added on to the project. So just to be clear that we're going to have to sculpt this moving forward on what that beautification is. So how do we get to that point? One of the things Theresa and I have been discussing is with poison code group that worked on our comp planning, if they want to provide some assistance and direction on how to get to that point, and I'll use an example, is we worked on one of these projects in Spring Grove, well, from which Theresa, two inches city administrator, and we did a large level of beautification, and then we did another one in Rushford, we didn't have a lot of beautification. So the scope here is going to have to be refined from the city moving forward here in the next coming months into, you know, a year, six months. So that necessarily isn't in here if this takes a large beautification effort, it's going to be.
That was one question I had, you kind of answered it here before. I got the, so you're looking, you've got $110,000 in here for beautification, and then the state's going to match it, so it's 220?
Yep, but if we go over that, if we go over that, then the state may say you're adding more beautification than what they want to cost participate on.
Okay, cool.
You know, if we built a welcome to Cassin sign, the state may not.
At 220, there'd be no change to your numbers that you have here right now, but.
Well, it goes back to the, how do we, how do we, how does the city sculpt out that beautification? So I have some time in here for myself to talk about the lanes, to talk about beautification. The question is, does the city really want to bring a landscape architect involved to really look at beautification, and do we add a, what's been talked about in a comp plan, a gateway to the community? Do they want to add a large amount of plantings, planters, special streetlights, you name it, I mean, now would be the time that the cities ask themselves a question, is that what they want to add to the project?
Thank you. Any questions for Brandon? I'll entertain a motion to approve the $610,000, not to exceed $610,000 of the scope of the work that's in play.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
Aye.
Motion passes forward. What, Linda?
The next item, Mayor, there is the establish technical advisor committee, I don't know if you want to provide myself and the administrator some direction on establishing that, because that is going to become the next, or the first phase of this project.
Yeah, we can talk about that some more, and then maybe when we establish the committees for 2019, we can just make that more of a.
First time, sure.
Yep.
Yep, it's our script.
Okay.
So second item there, overview of standing and upcoming projects, kind of springboards off the discussion we had last meeting regarding letter of credits and that, and how we kind of set up our development process, I wanted to touch base on that a little bit, because we do have some existing development agreements that are out there, outstanding in construction, specifically some Blains projects, Houston's big a little project, the left subdivision, and then also big a little.
Specifically, some Blains projects, Houston's big little project, the left subdivision, and then also big little border in the northwest part of town. Those are projects that have existing development agreements that are still outstanding. We have some punch list items, constructions in progress. So with that said, we were, Theresa and I had discussed sending reminders to those developers that they were still expecting this stuff to get done. We need, we need solid, good public infrastructure. We need these punch lists on their list of things that we're expecting them to complete, so. Just wanted to have that conversation, remind the council of that. And then moving forward with other private projects, we've met with some private entities that were talking about bringing some different developments forward to the city. Those haven't been to the point of having a planning application submitted yet, but those could likely be coming in the future, so just giving you the heads up there. City projects, where kind of we're at, we finished up South Manorville at, we're pretty close to finishing up third, fourth, and fifth. We have the final lift of paving to do, some sodding to do, and then we'll have a bunch of punch list items, obviously, in that larger project. But that's the kind of majority of that work's not done. I think we're 95% completed there. Next year, we're talking about doing 16 Streets of the East. We're producing construction plans. We're currently surveying that road, doing some soil hoarings, with the intent to be constructing that next year with that million dollar grant we received from MINDOT. The Main Street Storms that we have delayed, that was part of this 57 project, still planning on completing that next year. And then there are obviously street and maintenance, concrete, concrete street and Batunis street maintenance projects, so. That's been a budget line, and so we're planning on completing that project next year, and obviously a lot of design here on 57, so. Just giving you a quick reminder of where we're at with projects and that we're still, still on.
Now, the sidewalk project and stuff that we had, is that gonna get signed next spring too? Or wasn't that?
That was seeded.
That, that's, that's the end deal on that.
Yep, so they did hydroseed at the last second, parent top of the snow, so that'll probably be a punch list that'll take care of the spring, but the council has made final payment on that, on that item, so.
We must have had a note on that last meeting, too.
Yeah, you had the approval of the county application. That's it. Just giving you a quick reminder where we're at, and so. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Brandon. Any other questions for Brandon? On the personnel number one, Fire Department Deputy Fire Chief, update.
Well, I don't have any recommendation from the personnel ready on that position.
Basically, I said last week, you're still to review whether there's been needed or not. That's the last I heard about it. Nomination and
Well, then I would entertain a motion to eliminate that position at the fire hall.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side.
Aye.
Motion carries through to two. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.